Oh, and here it goes. Just as it's.
Oh, no. Of course.
They're rebooting.
It appears to be, yes. Got a weird admin message. I have the printed copy, thank goodness. Okay, well, it is 6:00 PM, Monday, June 16th. So I'm going to first call to order the Liquor Control Board meeting. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance led by Deputy Mayor Thomas Rutter.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God into this ball with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, Jenny.
So presented before you, some renewals, new staff, does that have any concerns?
Okay, great. Are there any questions from council?
I'm curious for final approval, I think it's Tika House. Aren't they operating already? I'm just curious, the.
The Tika House?
Yeah, Tika House.
They are.
So I was just curious about the timing as to why this is coming to us now.
When they originally, oh, he just came in. So when he, they originally showed up, I gave them the restaurant application, talked about sidewalk, talked about liquor. And I reached out to him once, and then he just came in last week.
Okay, so is, I guess, have they been operating? They should have received this permit prior to starting operating?
I didn't have it, so I didn't have anything to bring to you.
Yeah.
Is there concern with the timing?
We didn't receive it until after they had begun the operation. So we processed it on the staff side as soon as we got it, but yeah.
And there's no, so given that, it makes me curious about other potential concerns that might come from the code enforcement team?
So I talked to him about liquor, and he said at this time, they're not serving liquor.
Okay.
They're young, this is their first experience, so I contacted him initially when I saw that the sign had moved in. I mean, the sign was on the wall, and like I said, I've reached out to him multiple times, and I'm glad he finally brought it in, so.
So Ray.
To your question about code enforcement, so I'm not, to my knowledge, aware of any concerns at this point from code. I don't know, Jenny, if you've heard any, but yeah, we're happy to follow up with John and confirm that. But again, I haven't heard of anything to date.
Okay, I'm sorry, I was thinking that standard practice was code weighs in on this before it comes to us. Is that not?
Not necessarily, not with restaurant. I do with liquor.
Okay, okay, thanks for the clarification.
Yep.
I was just curious about those things, one because of timing, knowing that they've been operating, then when this comes to us, and then because it's a change of ownership. If there's anything that hasn't been addressed, I don't know the last time code enforcement was in there to look at fire safety, things along those lines, so.
They were last year.
Okay, wonderful, all right. Those are my questions. Anyone else?
Any questions from the public on liquor control, restaurant licenses? If you're on Zoom, you can use the raise hand feature. Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Some of, second.
Motion by Thomas, second by Charlie, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. That is the end of the Liquor Control Board meeting agenda, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Some of.
Second.
Motion by Bryn, second by Thomas, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, that meeting is adjourned. Thank you, Jenny.
Thank you.
It's 6:03 PM, I will call to order the Winuski City Council meeting. Agenda review is up first. Any concerns with the order this evening?
I, I'm wondering if we can pull from the consent agenda, item G, to bring it into the first regular items.
Certainly. Okay. Moving on to public comments, if you're here for something on tonight's agenda, we will have time for public comment during the agenda item. But if you're here for something not related to the agenda, now would be the time to come up and speak if you would like. Please join us, state your name and town of residence and make your comment.
Good evening, my name's Felipe Hoyos, I am a happy Winuski resident. I, the amendments to the ULA UDR regarding parking came up, and then that triggered my thought about coming down here, so related but unrelated. I wanted to speak in favor of continuing to reduce parking requirements overall throughout the city. I do think that, you know, our wonderful, beautiful city has the lowest rates of car ownership in the state, I believe. That was from a study by the Jimin County Regional Planning Commission. So it is kind of weird to mandate one parking space per dwelling unit, in my opinion, just knowing that reality and keeping in mind the Winuski Master Plan, which does call for encouraging multimodal forms of transit, more public transportation use. And then specifically, I am requesting the city council direct the planning commission to, if that is even a thing, to consider the parking requirements at the O'Brien Center property and as part of the library project expansion. As far as I understand, from having spoken with the new landlords, they believe they are mandated to grow the amount of parking spaces on the property as a result of the square footage expansion in the library. And the only place they can put that extra parking appears to be where the basketball courts currently reside. I think that would be a real shame. You know, I live on that street, on Hickock Street. There are kids every day of the year going down to use those basketball courts. A wide variety of ages. Everybody uses it, it's a community anchor, and for that to be eliminated, I, it hurts. It hurts to even think about, and especially to be eliminated, to be replaced by parking, which would benefit a maximum of maybe three or four cars at a time, typically single individuals. So if the calculus is to eliminate something that benefits hundreds of, you know, hundreds of kids probably, more likely like several dozens, but still, of different ages, from different parts of the city, who come there to play, you know, shoot hoops. It stinks, and I'm not looking forward to it, it presents to me a public safety issue. If you think about public safety and like crime hotspots originating from a lack of foot traffic and a lack of eyes on the street, that would just make the whole situation a lot worse. I know for sure that the parking spots along the rail track are sites of like suspicious activity. I don't know what goes on there, but it just, you don't feel super comfortable walking by, and to bring that closer to the end of Hickock Street by putting parking spaces where the basketball court currently is, is upsetting. So I don't know what can be done. I think that that is the lone site in the city that's considered like a community space per the code. So I know that probably blanket reducing parking requirements throughout the city is a tough ask at this point, but for that specific spot, I do think it serves a vital community function, and I'd hate to see it replaced and eliminated, so.
Well, thank you for coming in to share, I will say at a minimum, I can make sure that the planning commission also hears these comments from you, and then we could consider something in the future.
Okay, yeah, and I can, I guess, reach out individually to the planning commission and start a conversation about what can be done.
Sure, yeah, you're welcome to come also speak in person, but if I don't see you at the next meeting, I'll let them know.
All right, thank you.
So did you have something, or are you here for an agenda item?
No, I'm here for an agenda.
Okay. We have a comment online, please, if we could have Jen come over.
Hi, everyone.
Welcome, Jen.
Thanks, well, I can't hear her, something else, but I wanted to echo what that person was just saying, I strongly agree with everything he just said. So just to throw my two cents in about that. But what I came to say tonight was, I think if any, you know, any of us have been paying attention to the news right now, it's going across the country, things are pretty upsetting. And I was under the impression, and I think many of us are, that Winuski is a sanctuary city. But what I've come to understand is that there was a resolution that was passed in 2016 to move the policy forward, but at this time, that there's not currently a policy, and I'm wondering what kind of, what would need to happen to create an actual policy to create for Winuski to be a sanctuary city?
Thanks, Jen, so there was a resolution several years ago directing staff to draft policy to support sanctuary cities that did result in fair and impartial policing policy being created and adopted. That was the only policy work that occurred following that resolution. I don't believe the resolution specified a specific sanctuary city policy. And so if that was something that council chose to pursue, that would be a new effort we would have to undertake.
And so if that's the case, how would something like that get started?
Members of council would have to introduce it.
Okay, so it's, right now, it's just the policing policy, and that's the only protections that the city has.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Thank you. Everyone else is here for meeting topics. Okay. Oh, yes, okay, I got confused by the agenda order change. We are on the consent agenda minutes, so we have our council meeting minutes from June 2nd, the payroll warrant, May 5 to June 7th, council payable warrant, June 12th, the subsequent payout warrant for April, survey for new public rights of way, and the Vermont Economic Progress Council tip district annual report certification. We have already moved item G into regular items. Any concerns about the consent agenda, others?
Nope.
Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'm moved.
Motion by Thomas, second by Aurora, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
She carries, thank you. We are on to council reports, Aurora, would you like to start?
Certainly, I don't have a huge amount to report, but I wasn't at the last Inclusion and Belonging Commission meeting. Leave discussions around thinking about sanctuary policies was part of that. And I know that we're also thinking about some upcoming vacancies on the commission, so if folks are interested, this and many of our other commissions are still accepting applicants, so wanted to note that here as well.
Thanks for that.
The Infrastructure Commission is not meeting this month, we were not able to find another date that worked for everybody, and we didn't have actionable items to kind of seek an alternative, a next best alternative. So infrastructure is not meeting this month, so I don't have any updates there. Similarly, we have one alternate vacancy, but have, you know, seen people recently. I mentioned all of the commissions and opportunities to apply for them across the board, so hoping some of those folks I talked to will apply soon. And Chinatown, SoCal Bayes District has their regular annual structural meeting on the 25th. Our alternate, Rachel, will be attending that since we have a special meeting this week. And the Bridge Committee will be having their next meeting on the 24th, I believe, midday, so I can give you updates then, after that. But that's it for me.
All right. Our Finance Commission did meet, they reviewed draft updates to the Small Business Loan Program. Very productive discussion, they want to do one final pass, so the next meeting, second Tuesday in July, 6:00 PM, should wrap that work up and then bring a recommendation forward to council. And the Planning Commission also met. They were talking about item C on tonight's agenda, so we'll have an update then, and they are not meeting this month in June. I think in July, it's the third Thursday, but I don't recall. July 10th, okay, will be the next planning commission meeting, thank you, Revi. That's it for me, Thomas?
Safe, Public, Connected People did not meet in June, will be meeting in July. Ray, do you know the date?
Second Tuesday.
Second Tuesday in July. Downtown Winuski hasn't met since we met last. They are meeting tomorrow, and we're doing planting in the Rotary, so check out flowers on the Rotary soon. Also, the mayor and I, where council is bringing back the council and community events, with the first one being the mayor and I at Standing Stone Wines at 7:00 PM on Tuesday, the 24th. So hope to see folks there, that's all I've got.
All right, the Winuski Housing Commission is not meeting this month, but will reconvene in July. Tonight, we'll be getting, we'll be discussing and potentially approving amendments to the municipal code, chapter 17, surrounding non-accrual short-term rentals and the public building registry. All I've got for now.
All right, thank you. City updates, Ray.
Great, got numbers, so I'm gonna read a few of them verbatim, so bear with me. Department of Public Works will be conducting a street sweeping on Wednesday, June 18th, along Mount Bay Ave from the Colchester Line to West Allen Street. During that time, parking is going to be prohibited on both sides of the street, starting at 7:00 AM. We did just put notice out for that this morning, but wanted to make sure to mention that here. We expect it'll be about a day work, and appreciate cooperation in advance as we get that work done. And more details and updates can be found on the city's website. Green Mountain Transit is holding a regular board meeting tomorrow morning at 7:30 AM, that's Tuesday, the 17th, and they'll be discussing and approving changes to the number nine Winuski service. We always encourage Winuski residents, that they're always invited to those meetings to attend. There is virtual and in-person options both, and you can learn more at rydgt.com and visit the Board of Commissioners page there for more information. Residents on Main Street are invited this week on Wednesday from 6:00 to 8:00 to an open house here at City Hall. And, what's that?
I thought that was tomorrow.
Oh, sorry, tomorrow, yep, you're right.
17th.
Yep, correct, 17th. To learn more about the project impacts and resources to help you through, and there will be light refreshments provided. This Friday, the 20th, we have downtown Winuski's Juneteenth celebration, so music, food, discussion, activities, something for everybody there as we come together as a community and celebrate black joy, liberation, and culture. Definitely hope to see a lot of folks out for that in Rotary Park from 5:00 to 8:00 Friday. And then lastly, just want to send a quick congratulations to Winuski High School's class of 2025, which recently graduated, and big appreciation to the teachers that helped get them there, definitely a community effort, but proud of those kids and was up at the school when they did their walk-through. They do a parade through the entire building, and all the classes come out and cheer, and it's pretty special, so definitely it was not a dry eye on the house, mine included, so congrats to them, and that's it.
Thank you. Moving into regular items, we have first from the agenda review, the former consent item G, Board Commission and Committee reappointments, council heard.
Yes, so I, there are kind of two questions that arose for me as I was reviewing this. One is that understanding there are still several committees that we haven't received new applications from, but I was also wondering if we could get an update on which of these do have applications kind of waiting.
Yeah, that is a good question that I do not know the answer to off the top of my head, I'm happy to get that information for you. I know Finance Commission is still in need, I believe Housing Commission still has an alternate vacancy, and I don't believe in either case we have any live applications for those. I know Safe, Healthy, Connected also has an alternate seat, and I think we have one application that came in recently that we need to follow up with, but definitely still, still in need of some, some folks to fill these seats, and not seeing a lot of action on the incoming application side so far.
Yeah, I can add that Planning Commission has at least the two alternates open, potentially one regular, we have two applications, two interviews scheduled for next week. Finance Commission actually.
Doesn't have a quorum, right?
Yeah, we have three, and one is about to, is not being renewed, so we need, we need people there.
I've been recruiting, so we'll see if any come in. I can say for infrastructure, there's one alternate vacancy, and I asked, part of the decision not to have a meeting this month was we don't have any applications for the infrastructure commission.
Part, the other reason that I raised this is, could it be possible that we move this reappointment to like part of our tax meeting in early July, and thus let any applications that we do have move through the system? Because that wouldn't, I guess, get in the way of any of July's meetings, I don't believe.
I will say on the Finance Commission, our current chair, who is not planning to renew, does plan to participate in one final meeting to wrap up the Small Business Loan Committee. If we don't reappoint the other two members, then we actually won't be able to have that meeting at all. So there is an impact for the Finance Commission there.
In July? So if we appoint them, when are we meeting?
25th? You mean for the special meeting?
For this, no, for our tax, when we set the tax rate.
Tax rate is being set July 7th, but the Finance Commission meets July 8th.
So it would still work out if we did those appointments and just.
Potentially.
Yeah. Alternatively, I would put forward a motion to approve all these reappointments excluding the Planning Commission.
Revi, can you confirm how many openings are on planning?
Planning has three openings. I've scheduled two interviews, one pending, another application might come box, that I'm coming to review and reply to. It's been a long road, coming back from vacation. Yeah, but.
So that sounds like three openings and three, potentially three valid applications.
Yes.
So.
Add them to this, though, tangentially, on paper, all the terms expire June 30th for all the boards and boards. Yeah, so something to keep in mind.
We stagger ours in infrastructure.
Right, it's, they're staggered, so I have, so on Planning Commission, half the members, their terms expire June 2026. But the people who are serving right now, their term that, who are looking to re-up, their terms expire at the end of the.
I am concerned with the equity issue that we've talked about in the past, that if we have three applications for three open seats, and we just move, put, you know, close two of those seats, then we're gonna have three people for one seat, and I feel like I personally find it a priority to, as it sounds like this commission has those applications where the other commissions do not. I think it would be most equitable to allow for that competitive application.
Wait, to be clear, there are three openings and three applicants, so even if we reappoint these people, we essentially have just enough applicants for the openings right now.
Cause there's a total of five commissioners on the commission, or there's a two?
But.
Five, but there's two alternate.
Two alternate, but we have, so there are three right now excluding, you know, who's.
There's three vacancies currently. Not including these people.
Okay, so that, that honestly was a question too, so what's listed here isn't necess, doesn't necessarily line up to the vacancies? I guess I'm just a little confused by how the information has been presented to council, so comparing this information to previous, that Elaine sent.
Got it, yeah, so the ones that are here may not fill all the vacancies that exist.
But they might fill some of them?
They will, I mean, these reappointments will fill some, yes, because we have at least two instances where alternates are moving into regular seats.
But that opens the alternate.
Yeah.
Reappointing these doesn't change the number of vacancies in any commission.
Okay. So just to confirm, there would still be three vacancies?
Two, actually, for planning.
Two?
Yeah, I just looked at the table, so on Planning Commission, according to the table, four seats are set to expire in this month. Two individuals are looking to renew, and then there would be two vacancies that we'd be.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, that's helpful. Yeah, I know that, like, this conversation comes up and has come up the past several years too, so that's why I kind of wanted to have it, and kind of, I think we've all been doing, I know I've been doing outreach to try and get folks on these boards too, and that like, as we come up to this, more people sometimes are in the space where they're like, actually, I can't renew. But I want to also think about if there is a way that we can make the appointments, like, just, I don't know, to give that room for any new folks, but it sounds like that might be a moot point in this case.
Yeah, I know we talked about this last year, right, and this is why we advertised much earlier, because we wanted the ability to, if there were new applicants, to review those before reappointing incumbents to be able to weigh that. I talked to staff in advance of this, though, because we don't even, broadly, we don't have enough applicants for the vacancies, we wanted to put forward these reappointments before they expire, because we had people willing to serve. I think obviously we want to keep working towards this in the future.
Yeah.
One thing that Thomas did point out is, we had said last year, we wanted to have an application due date included in the communications, which we did miss this year. So that is something that we want to make sure we do in the future.
There was a due date.
Maybe in the first one.
Yeah.
The latest one didn't say it.
Yeah.
In any case.
And the website just says when the terms expire, but it doesn't say when people should apply by.
Yeah. Yeah. And I know we've done, we, I think, Thomas, Christine, and I, we did the, like, this is how you.
Commission!
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, well, thank you all for having, like, bringing this down to have the discussion more, because there seems to still be some gap, but I know we're all trying very hard to build to make it more equitable.
Yeah, I think it's continuous improvement, and the, from the conversation I, I have, I think, you know, despite the efforts to get the word out, I think folks are intimidated by what the time commitment would look like. The amount of homework that would be needed for the commissions, and the knowledge or skill level that they would need, and I mean, there's definitely a lot of reassurance I give folks when I'm talking to them one-on-one. But I think a lot of folks kind of come, come back to the time, I think all of the other things can be addressed, I think it kind of, the barrier that I perceive at least is time, and wanting to commit to something that, you know, may take away from other things.
Yeah, especially when it's asking for a lot of personal input and professional input, and is unpaid.
They didn't raise those as barriers, and it seems like from the IMB data, it's kind of here and there whether folks accept the payment or not.
No, they all accept it.
Okay, well, I feel like I should review some of the data, because I feel like that was inconsistent.
I think in the, I think it's shifted over time, potentially, we haven't seen an updating vote sometime.
Needless to say, is there opportunities for continuous improvement? Absolutely.
Yeah, and I think it's, it's the right question to be bringing up, for sure.
Yes, and does $50 a meeting solve the inequalities that folks face to even have that time?
Yeah.
I think that's also. Question.
For the record, that's also only available to IMB.
Exactly, correct.
Yeah, and I'll say. Yeah, and I'll say I, I have heard some feedback too about childcare and just the time of meetings being in the evenings for especially, you know, parents. Really tricky time. So I think there's a lot of pieces around the commission structure that we're trying to sort out and work through. And I think, like you said, I think continuous improvement is a good mindset as we approach that. I think all of us as staff feel it too, for sure.
Thank you all. Do we have a motion to approve, approve the Board Commission Committee reappointments? So moved. Motion by Bryn, second by Charlie. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Okay. Back onto regular item A. So a public hearing has been noticed for the consideration of amendments to the Unified Land Use and Development Regulations, section, section four point one seven, Transportation Demand Management. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing and invite our Director of City Planning to give introduction for our members of the public. Rebby, if you.
Nominate the introduction first, so you'll open the public hearing first.
I vote, it's open. I'm opening it, but I would like you to introduce, and then we'll take.
No problem. So the regulations that you're considering are transportation demand management requirements. Require projects that have twenty dwelling units or five houses or a commercial space or a combination of both, to include amenities or programs that would encourage people to use alternate modes of transportation other than private vehicle. The, there are a litany of ways that an applicant can meet the requirements. The many options are listed in the draft regulations. In the draft regulations too, there's also monitoring and evaluation that staff will take on. For meeting these requirements, applicants would receive a twenty percent parking reduction if their project is located within the, the gateway downtown C one or C two districts. If they are in the residential districts and choose to opt into these regulations, then they could get a fifteen percent parking reduction. So you reviewed these regulations back on May fifth. I made a number of changes that you haven't seen yet, because they were not included in your materials that I realized just now. And I'd like to walk you through it, so I can share, so I'll share my screen and just walk you through it. I also had a memo to overview all those changes that I can send both of those to you after this public hearing for you to review and consider. Yeah, during the May fifth meeting, I know a lot of you had some questions and some suggestions. And, oh, sharing is not turned on. Can you, can you turn on sharing, Ray?
Paul, can you let Rebby share?
I got you. You're good. Go for it.
Thank you.
Thanks. Let's see here. Okay, so going through specifically the changes that were provided by legal and were suggested by you, going all the way down. I have marked them in blue in here, and I know I've inverted all my colors, so it's not helpful, but I'm sure that when you read it on your own, it'll make a lot more sense. One of the suggestions that, that the city attorney suggested was to clarify the language regarding tiers. In the documents that's in the packet, it has this table that lists twenty to forty units or five thousand square feet. The city attorney suggested combining them into TDM units and then defining what a TDM unit is. So it simplifies that table into twenty to forty TDM units, and then defines the TDM unit equal to one dwelling unit or, and two hundred and fifty square feet of commercial space. So that way, it clarifies that for mixed-use projects, it, X amount of TDM units would trigger these regulations to go into effect. Alongside that, you had questions about the marketing for this. And for the marketing, the, the distribution of marketing materials, I added some regulations to that, to, to scaffold it, that, that the marketing materials has to be, that whatever marketing, marketing materials are distributed annually, they also have to be provided to me, and they have to be provided upon with new employees, new tenants, or when the building or unit changes ownership. Alongside of that, minor changes to the accessory uses that any projects that include supporting uses within a primary use, such as a fitness center, a restaurant, retail use, except for hardware stores and grocery stores, they would receive two points. And then one of the suggestions during the previous meeting for daycares, I've expanded that to additional uses that are underrepresented or lacking in the city per the strategic economic, I forget the entire word. So that, the, the economic strategy, long-range plan, that, that identifies which uses are lacking and that the city would like to see in the future. So in that, if a project includes a daycare facility, a grocery store, or a hardware store, and only one of those three, they could receive four points instead of just two. With GMT, there was a lack of clarity before on how many points a project would receive for GMT. Subsequently, after the last meeting, had a good conversation with GMT on how they want to sort this out, and we came up with a very, very simple streamlined strategy that the point value of a project would be based on the scale of the project. That for a tier one project, if they, if they consult with GMT and provide GMT right credits, they would receive three points automatically. Tier two projects would receive four points automatically, tier three projects would receive five points automatically. They, we kind of came to the conclusion that it doesn't, it doesn't really, we don't have to break it down so discreetly, that we can just draw some fine lines with the understanding that the more that you pay into GMT, the more costs that's associated with the development, and therefore, the more points should be provided in return. Let's see, alongside of that, going down further, showers and clothes lockers. Some questions about how many showers and clothes lockers should be provided. Interestingly enough, in my research, I, none of the other TDM ordinances really specify X amount of showers and clothes lockers per, per development. There was no link to the number of units or number of employees. There was, there was a link to the number of bike parking spaces, but for, for one example, but it didn't, that didn't fit the Winuski context. So I concluded that for tier one and two-year shoot projects, based on the size and scale of those projects, providing at least one shower and six clothes lockers would suffice, and then for two or three projects, doubling that would, would be, would be enough. Especially considering our current mode share split with bicyclists and, and drivers.
Sorry, can you say that last part a little louder?
Considering our current mode share split, based on how many people bike and, and drive currently to commute.
Are we creating policies for today, or are we creating policies for what we want Winuski to be?
I, I mean, this is to create a policy for what Winuski would, would like to be, some, a policy that would drive up that mode share split. But I'm aware that there's gonna be some, some calibrating and tweaking over time that's gonna be needed. I'm hoping that over time, as that mode share goes up, that maybe we will need to increase the number of showers and clothes lockers over time. But I'm aware that I need to do monitoring and evaluation over time, so that way I can come back to you in two years and say, hey, we've moved up our mode share. Therefore, we should increase the number of showers and clothes lockers. Lastly, well, second to last, both, I think you and the city attorney had some questions about monitoring and evaluation over time, and also how this would be maintained in our land records. So one requirement here is that the TDM plan shall be recorded in the land records. The copies of the marketing strategy that are just, that are distributed has to be provided to me every two years. And then I included a section on how exactly someone can go about amending their TDM plan if necessary, based off of programs that are currently available, programs that might change over time, and how they could go about doing that. This, and then I also included a definition of a grocery store. So this is not included in our current regulations, and there's a reference to what a grocery store is. So I crafted this definition of a retail use primarily engaged in selling food to the general public in which at least twenty percent of the total gross floor area is devoted to the sale of fresh produce, meats, and dairy.
Thank you for the overview, Rebby. Would invite if anyone, any members of the public have questions or comments about this issue, you could come up at this time. And if you're online, you can use the raise hand feature.
And then, just to clarify.
Okay, so seeing no comment from the public, I will now close the public hearing, and we can move into item B, which is council discussion. So go ahead.
So clarifying what's linked in the agenda for tonight, are the changes you just presented linked in the agenda tonight?
They are not. They're simply referenced in the cover sheet, so I need to send those to you.
Okay, and is it possible to have Paul update the agenda online with the?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question to start. Just thinking about the definition of grocery store, I think we've talked in the past for different reasons about like what, I don't know, there's been pushback on what counts as like a food desert in the ways that we sometimes don't count some of our smaller grocery stores, and just kind of thinking about the, kind of, in your definition, did you kind of think about kind of best practices around that?
Yeah, so I was, this, I was thinking about best practices across the board, and typically what it, what a grocery store is. Groceries and, under best practices, grocery stores include fifteen to twenty-five percent of a fresh produce, meats, and dairy. Low end is fifteen percent. Your large-scale grocery store includes about twenty-five percent. So twenty percent is something that I saw in other regulations that, and how they define grocery stores.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any more questions about the amendments proposed? So this item has been mourned for discussion or approval. Obviously, there are a few changes that we have just seen. If council is not comfortable approving, this could be bumped to the next agenda, but if you are, I would entertain a motion to approve.
With the caveat that our suggestions are noted. So moved.
There is a motion by Charlie.
Second.
And a second by Thomas. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is that okay? All aye, motion carries. Thank you very much. Thank you.
To sail out, those will go into effect twenty-one days.
Yes.
Just.
Yeah.
So.
For statute. Yeah, yes, yeah. I don't know the exact date of that, but yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rebby.
Okay, so for item C, we have the Chitting County Regional Planning Commission, Regional Future Land Use Map, Housing Targets, and Tier One B. Sarah from CCRPC here.
Yes, I'm Sarah with CCRPC. Do you want me to start and talk, or do you want?
Sure, yeah, I can talk, no problem. Yeah, yeah, I can briefly on what exactly this is. So with Act forty-seven, that, the home act that went into effect in twenty twenty, summer of twenty twenty-three, Act one eighty-one that went into effect last summer, that placed a number of changes on local and state land use regulations. And with Act twenty-one specifically, restructured Act two fifty, restructured regional planning's role in land use and state designation programs. One piece of that is the Regional Future Land Use Map, its definitions, and how that all intersects with state designation programs. Another piece that is connected to all of this is the regional housing targets that were set in Act forty-seven that requires regional planning commissions to pull those out further from the state housing needs assessment to define what the regional housing needs assessment is, and then what our local housing has. And then provide a range of targets for, for consideration. With the future land use maps, it might be easier to just to show them, right?
Yeah. Do you want me to?
I'm. Sure.
I'm in the Zoom room, I could share my screen.
Yeah.
This is, this is Paul, I'm the Communications Director. Do you, just, I'm gonna, I'm gonna bring you over, and then I'm gonna give you sharing permissions. Just make sure your laptop volume is all the way down, and that you mute yourself on Zoom when I promote you.
Okay. Yeah, so like Rebby said, we are creating these new regional future land use maps that I'm, I'm showing the, the version that I could move around it and scroll, zoom in and out of, the one that's in the packet, it's just a still shot. And the regional planning commissions have been tasked with creating these new regional future land use maps. Basically, the, and I'm happy, Rebby, Rebby was just speaking to it, I don't mean to cut you off, but I'm happy to answer any questions anybody has about the implications of these maps and how it interacts with Act two fifty or the state designation program. But basically, the decision that is brought to council today has to do with the opportunity for Act two fifty exemptions. As many of you probably know, Act two fifty is usually triggered by the size of development. However, Act one eighty-one has allowed certain areas to be eligible for exemption. And as the Regional Planning Commission, we have mapped what those areas are. So the areas that are in pink on this map are areas that we have identified based on state statute and adopted city policy as being eligible for Act two fifty exemptions. So the dark purples, the pinks, the lighter pinks, and the magentas over here in Colchester or Essex, both those areas. Those are the colors that we have identified as eligible for exemptions, but the, the decision of whether or not a municipality wants Act two fifty exemptions or not lies with the legislative body. So that is sort of the decision in front of you all today, and the Planning Commission has made a recommendation.
And to highlight underscore, this map in front of you, that will not have any effect on the city zoning regulations or the zoning map. This is a regional future land use map, a tool for CCRPC for, for planning purposes in the long term. It would be referred to possibly in our municipal plan, but it's mainly a tool for CCRPC for their purposes.
And a tool for the state, state legislators too. Yes, but local zoning still holds, holds sway. So even if you say, hey, we want Act two fifty exemption for any development up to fifty units on ten acres or less, which is what tier one B is, if a property is in a zone that has only ten units allowed, that's gonna be what is allowable for that particular property.
Yeah.
Can I ask, just, just for like a very basic couple sentence on what Act two fifty is?
Sure. So Act two fifty is a state permitting process that applies to all developments that propose ten units or more, ten, ten or more acres of commercial development, and ten or more acres of just really commercial disturbance. So that even includes municipal, like, road projects that might disturb ten or more acres. And also, if any developer or any individual that develops ten or more units within a five-year period in a five-mile radius. Act two thirty, two, two thirty also includes now a, a road rule that for any project that proposes.
Seven hundred or eight hundred? Yeah, for, if there's even just one house that is gonna have a driveway that is longer than eight hundred feet, Act two fifty would be triggered to prevent habitat. Act 250 would be triggered to prevent habitat.
Yep, so it is a, it's a pretty robust, comprehensive state permitting process for what the state had determined, higher intensity, larger scale development. And they, and part of that review criteria is the, the 10 criteria that I've included in the materials too, that's in very fine print. I can send you an Excel sheet for that too. And so those are the review criteria for, for Act 250.
And so as you could see, Act 181 recognizes that a lot of Act 250 is duplicative of permitting processes that are already happening at the local level. So Winuski's development review already goes through many of the criteria that Act 250 does at the state level, so.
So it's reducing fees for developers, but not really, I guess the concern would be like not necessary. The purpose of Act 250 was like environmental.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. And other state permits still hold sway too, like you still would need to get a stormwater permit and things, wetlands, stuff like that, yeah.
But because of all the things that kind of listed of all the different ways it can be triggered, it has been a potential burden in time and money for developers, so having these exemption areas would be beneficial for a city like Winuski that one is covering it in other ways and two wants to incentivize development.
Yes.
Just making sure.
Yep.
So I was going through all the documents, I was like, okay, what is exactly?
Yeah.
The goal here.
Yeah, so Act 250, as you mentioned, it would reduce permit costs for developers. Act 250 permits can cost $10,000, $15,000 to way above six figures, depending on the size, scale of a project. It would could, it would reduce the, the length of permitting for a project. Typically, projects, if they have to go through Act 250 permit review, they'd go through permit review with us. That could take one, three, five months, depending on the scope, scale, size of the project. And then an additional one, three, five months, who knows with Act 250. And, and for, for us, a duplicative process.
Yeah.
And that we could theoretically see that cost reduction in rents too.
Thank you. And our planning commission is recommending we do this for all of the like lighter purple.
So there's a lot of different purples. So the, the, the purples included would be all of our residential areas. And then our, our corridors to an extent. It would not include the downtown core because our downtown core is already covered by an Act 250 permit. So it, it kind of increases the administrative headache for me to manage Act 250 with proposals and trying to figure out whether they would be exempt, whether they would not, and what your role would be in, in permit review. And then with the, I guess lavender-like lighter purples in the north of the city and then near Memorial Park, those are our industrial areas. And those areas are not eligible for Act 250 exemptions right now.
So are you, I'm not, I didn't want to interrupt if you had additional things to present.
And we certainly could talk more about anything that was included in the memo, like the housing targets or like, if you're interested in how this intersects with the state designation program, we could share a little bit about that too, but in terms of like the decision at hand.
Sure.
That's what, yeah.
Rebby, what was the vote by the planning commission?
Their vote was three in favor, one against, against, one abstention.
And you have the raising for the, the abstention and the abstain, if, if you recall, I know that was a little while ago.
Yeah, I'm not sure about the abstention, but for the against, it was because of historic resources.
Okay, good to know. And thank you for responding to my request earlier to quickly provide the meeting notes from the planning commission meeting. There were some questions that were raised that might be worth covering here about priority housing, if you're willing to entertain the conversation. And how this doesn't necessarily assure that the housing that is exempt from Act 250 will be priority housing. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yeah, it's kind of, for Winuski, it's kind of a weird two steps forward, one step back. So we, so with the priority housing exemptions that are currently in place and were in place, to provide some context, the priority housing exemption exempted projects from Act 250 for projects of up to 74 units if 20% of the units were affordable at 80% of the area median income for a 20-year period. Winuski has had a number of many projects that have taken on this benefit, chose to include affordable housing units. There have been more projects that have taken on the exemption than projects that have gone through Act 250. And even the projects that have gone through Act 250, a huge chunk of them were in our downtown. So there, no costs, there are no costs, activity costs if, if the city applies for active. So that, so, so there's, the priority housing exemption goes away with the statutory change. There, I was trying really hard to figure out a way for us to expand the priority housing benefit that, and, and exemption throughout the city and not the Tier 1B exemption. And there's, there's just no, no way, there's no loophole. So, so this is, this is the best option that we have. We want to expand and we'll continue Act 250 exemptions for projects and expand to 50 exemptions for projects. Right now in statute, there's no way to, that, that allows for that priority housing.
Yeah, and that, that's something that I don't know if the state really realized until it was brought to the attention because it's only really an issue that communities and urban communities in Chitting County are facing. Because the priority housing project exemption in rural communities is up to 50 units and so having the Tier 1B is up to 50 units anyway, so it's only this weird one step back for the urban communities in Chitting County. So there is talk at the state in rooms that I'm not in, but we know that is happening on how to remedy that.
So we kind of lose one of our carrots to try and get folks to do more.
Yeah, and that's why we've been working on inclusionary zoning and trying to put that into effect as quickly as possible to keep that carrot in place for, for Winuski.
I would add, we have our own priority housing incentives in our zone, and so I think it's up to us to revisit those in light of these state changes as things evolve.
Follow-up question. Do you know how many communities have already voted, I guess?
So I was on vacation last week, so I don't have the most up-to-date number. But I do know that before I left, South Burlington, Heinsberg, and Westford had all opted in to some level. I know South Burlington did all, oh, and Essex Junction did last week too. So Essex Junction, South Burlington did, did all eligible areas similar to what Winuski's planning commission recommended. I think Heinsberg did the same and then Westford did a smaller subsection, but these meetings are all happening right now. There's like two others happening tonight as well.
Yeah, it sounds like the deadline for you is this month.
Yeah, that's, that's our hope, yeah.
And then one, one additional follow-up question to that, can you go into, again, reading the minutes? So thanks for the quick reply earlier. How Westford went about their, I'm not saying we want to.
Yeah, I was not in, I was not the liaison for that particular community, but we basically were like, we think this area could zoom out and go look at what it is. And Westford is eligible for this exemption, it's not a large area. And the municipality did not want the full area to be exempt, and so they chose a couple parcels, I believe, in their sort of downtown core area. So they said, we don't want this village area to be, again, I don't know what parcels, so don't quote me on that. But we don't, we don't want these village areas, but we do want these, these few parcels here, so, yeah. The municipalities have the ability to pick and choose. I mean, and I guess Winuski is doing, would, the planning commission recommended doing a similar thing by saying we are excluding the downtown core.
Any other questions? Are there any questions from members of the public on this item? Would you like to come up to a microphone, please? And if you could introduce yourselves.
My name is Paul Fernet, live on Bellevue Street in Winuski. I, just a comment I wanted to make, it, just sitting there, probably only garnered about 25% of the conversation that's happened tonight. And I don't know if you're at the issue of the armory, if that's later, I'll.
Later in the agenda.
I'll wait then. And, you know, you certainly can't read from back there where the streets are in Winuski on this map. What is?
I, can I try to summarize?
Sure.
The dark purple is all the gateway zoning, so it's Main Street, East Allen, Mount Spade Avenue.
Okay.
And then that lighter purple next to it, that's all of our residential zone. And what is being proposed here is for all those districts, the gateways and the residential ones, we become exempt from Act 250 state level permitting and review because we already have all of the equivalent zoning in place in the city. So it's duplicative, it's not adding anything to development review except for time and costs, that's increasing the cost of housing. I would say that's the summary of what we're considering.
So if I understand what you're saying is you could build 50 units next door to a single-family home?
No. This would have no impact on our current zoning, so we would still retain residential zoning and the current density limits of like three stories, 50% lot coverage, et cetera.
But the area, for example, where I live, I looked at a previous zoning map, it was zoned single-family. And it's going to fall into a, into an area where you can do whatever you want?
No, our zoning still has residential restrictions.
Okay.
Per state statute, you can build up to four units in any district.
Okay.
So there isn't any more single-family, honestly.
My concern is, there are a lot of people that don't know what's going on. Especially in the area that, where I live. My next-door neighbor, for example, said, oh, we have a friend who's a, who's a builder. He, he asked us if we were interested in having a duplex built in our backyard. Those things really concern me. You move to an area that is zoned single-family and all of a sudden, it's a free-for-all?
I would not categorize it as a free-for-all. We have been updating our zoning to align with state mandated changes that allow quadrplexes everywhere in our town.
This is a state-level issue.
I would also, I don't care if it's a state issue, I, I would encourage you to consider the fact that the, the, the city already is skewed terribly towards multifamily and very few single-family. As a matter of fact, I think Winuski is the opposite of what every other community is. And the issue of affordable housing, as important as it is, I think the city has gone way beyond what other communities have done. That's mine.
Thank you.
One, Rebby, a question for you. So the summary was that everything that's in Act 250 is essentially duplicative for what we have in place in Winuski. Does Winuski consider secondary impact the way Act 250 does?
Um, yes, by, by secondary impacts, could you expand on what you mean?
So from my least understanding, things might have changed since I was closer to the legislation pre-pandemic, but again, from the conservation lens, intention of Act 250 was looking at the size of a development and the secondary impacts that it could have by increasing development around their project by being of a particular size. So traffic impacts, I think that, you know, there's probably TDMs that are required, but also like the secondary businesses that could come in as a result. So do our permits, do our ordinances kind of look at that secondary impact as well?
So we look at traffic impacts, so we have the same traffic impact threshold as Act 250 at 75. If it generates 75 or more chip ends. With additional businesses, I'm not, I'm, I'm not entirely familiar with this part with Act 250 based on all the Act 250 permits that I've read. I know that with secondary impacts with Act 250, that I'm more familiar with is like tree-cutting limitations and, and mowing limitations and, and buffer limits, which are elements that Winuski, the Winuski context just doesn't face. So, so, so that's at least my familiarity with at least the secondary impacts that you're speaking of.
And Sarah, you were kind of nodding a second ago, so I don't know if you have anything else to add to it.
Rebby is more familiar with the Winuski regulations than I am.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But on the Act 250 side of things, secondary impact?
Yeah, I mean, the traffic, the traffic one's probably the biggest one that we see, both things on. Sometimes there's like river corridor, water, wastewater things as well. But I don't, I don't think that would be a major thing in a place like Winuski.
Yeah, and typically with traffic, if there's any traffic concerns on my end, on John's end, or even on the DRB's end, we can just throw it at CCRPC staff, I've consulted with CCRPC staff on development review for traffic impacts if there's ever been a concern from the DRBs. And they've done a fantastic job with reviewing traffic studies and giving us a sense of how much of the traffic impact there could be from potential projects.
And then I guess just a follow-up question about priority housing. Maybe it's something you're familiar with. So the Act 250 has been a pretty solid lever for increasing priority housing development, from what it sounds like. Our incentives to date really have not necessarily moved the needle. Would this Tier 1B exemption, I guess, would the changes we made tonight for incentives rise to the level kind of coming in and compensating and also standing in as that motivational lever for priority housing?
I would say, like, I know the draft inclusionary zoning sort of replicates that.
Okay.
What we're getting out of Act 250 exemption and our priority housing incentives that we made for the low, like local zoning, we updated those somewhat recently and there hasn't been a ton of development in that period of time, so I don't think they've been tested very much.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've, I mean, I've received a lot of inquiries. I, I feel like there's been, like, at least for this, the starting level, like a good amount of buzz that we're only going to see the effectiveness in three, four, or five years' time. Just because usually, in my experience, in the startup of any new regulations, it takes some time to get up to, to, to effectiveness and to applicability. But in terms of, I think Christine had it spot on that the priority housing incentives, like the, the priority housing exemption that wasn't Act 250, we're trying to replicate that with inclusionary zoning as much as possible, really, to provide the, the same amount of affordable housing in, in Winuski and hopefully even beyond the priority housing exemption by, by requiring perpetually affordable housing. Not just term-limited house, affordable housing. This has the potential benefit of allowing for 10-unit development that, that do follow through on the priority housing incentives that are currently in place in our residential districts, but it's only for a limited amount of properties in our residential districts because of property size and the fact that they would have to take advantage of the priority housing incentives in order to build to scale.
Apologize for being the only one asking questions, I guess. Are there any further benefits to the municipality? So one thing that we just talked about at our series, strategies, combined words, strategies and priorities was about impact fees. And I'm curious, is there anything in legislation now or in draft form that provides additional? provides additional resources to municipalities that adopt one of the more lenient tiers of Act 250 to support with infrastructure? I know there's the recent like project specific TIF that kind of, I think will be effective in July. Um, but is there anything else, I guess?
Um, so I guess that that kind of speaks a little bit to how this map, it might speak a little bit to how this map intersects with the state designation program. So the, all the, all the areas that are eligible for tier one B are also now eligible for the state designation program investments, which could be something as simple as historic tax credits to something much larger, um, like just funding for different planning studies or transportation studies or things like that. And so this map itself is going to replace the current designations, which is only an expansion for Wunuski. So that's only a benefit, but it doesn't actually interact with whether or not the city opts into tier one B or not. That'll just be in place once this map is adopted by our board and then by the new Land Use Survey Board at the state level.
Okay, that's really good.
I think I'm done.
Maybe.
Is there any more questions or comments from council?
I mean, I think Act 250 has been almost statewide recognized at this point as impeding the growth that we need for the home targets that we need, so.
There's so many things to ask, the devil's on the details, right?
All right. Well, hearing no further comment. This is on for approval. The recommended action is to adopt municipal resolution on tier one B status to cover all eligible areas within the planned growth area with exception to the downtown floor. Do I have a motion to approve?
Some of.
Second.
Motion by Thomas, second by Charlie. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries.
I'm staying.
Oh, sorry, I thought I heard you. Okay, the motion still carries. Thank you very much, Sarah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Okay, we are now on item D. So a public hearing has been noticed for the consideration of proposed amendments to Municipal Code, Chapter 17, the Public Building Registry. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing and invite our Housing Initiative Director to provide an introduction.
Hi, everyone.
Hi, Jasmine.
Can hear me okay? Sorry, I'm not able to be there today. I'm hourly timed vacation. So, uh, this public hearing is for amendments to Chapter 17 regarding short term rental registration and licensing. And so the ordinance initially, the changes that introduced the short term rental registry program went into effect on July 1st, 2024. Um, and that ordinance language allows the council to set a cap on owner occupied short term rental licenses. Um, so the current ordinance language states that prior to June 30th, 2025, this ordinance shall be amended to establish the cap and mechanism for the allocation of licenses under the cap. And so we worked with the attorneys to draft new language. Um, and we settled on that the cap number will be established from time to time by city council resolution. Um, so rather than having the exact number in ordinance that will need to be changed, uh, each year, we have the option to change it from time to time, um, whenever we see fit or appropriate. Um, yeah, so I think that's it for now.
Thank you, Jasmine. Any questions from council?
No.
Need to update this ordinance language to match the use of a resolution to set the short term rental cap. Questions from members of the public on the short term rental regulation? Okay, oh, I mean, it's, yeah, any comments from the public, it's public here. I shouldn't have asked for council questions. Okay, seeing no comment, I will now close the public hearing. And we will move to item E, which is on for approval, the amendments to Municipal Code, Chapter 17 and the resolution.
And just to say aloud, process wise, we'll have to do the update to the ordinance first as an approval and then the approval of the resolution that results from that ordinance change, just so we cover both of those pieces.
Thank you. So I am seeking a motion to approve amendments to Chapter 17 of the municipal code as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Bryn, second by Charlie. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I'm seeking a motion to approve a resolution to set cap on non owner occupied short term rental licenses as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Charlie, second by Thomas. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Okay.
Again, just to say aloud, those go into effect 30 days from today.
30 days, thank you. Oh, and the other one was 21 days, right? The TM?
Correct, TM was 21 days, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Before we read the motions for the executive session, I'm just curious on an estimated time since we have members of the public that.
Yeah, so to be clear on that. We've, you've all received information about, um, okay, so an executive session has been warned pursuant to state statute section 3132, the negotiation of real estate purchase release options related to the armory. We've received preliminary information about that. If council feels the need to have an executive session to discuss that with staff or attorney, we have warned that if the need is there, we don't need to use it if we're ready to move into the item, the public items for discussion. So it's really about if anyone here wants to have confidential discussion with all the negotiations.
I feel as though my concerns have been addressed since our meeting last week, two weeks ago.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Okay, so we don't need the executive session. Can move into regular items nine A, the Armory redevelopment project fund balance request, $5,250. Um, and Jasmine, we do have members of the public here, so some overview of project would be useful.
Yeah, and I think Jasmine and I talked earlier, I'm going to do just a quick
Okay, thank you.
stepwise over like table set and then Jasmine will kind of share details, but these next three items are related. First would be a request for a fund balance for the deposit required on the purchase of the armory from the National Guard, um, which is 1% of the purchase price or the appraised price, so $5,250. From there, once that is approved, we would move into discussion and potentially approval of a purchase and sale agreement, which we've shared a draft with here. Authorizing city manager to, uh, sign that and make any ministerial or non substantive changes prior to author or execution. And then from there, an option agreement between the city and Champlain Housing Trust on that property to cover the time between the purchase and a potential transfer to CHT down the road. So those are the three steps we're going to kind of be walking through. They're all tied together, but that kind of orders, I think, needed to kind of have the pieces in place to make the next decision. So Jasmine can talk a little bit further about the details there.
Thank you.
Great. Alrighty, um, so I will start it off, I guess, giving a little bit of a background of the project. Um, so I believe it was late 2022. Um, the city was made aware that the National Guard was planning to decommission and sell their property. That's located at 255 Le Fountain Street, also known sometimes as 50 Park Street. Um, which was formerly used as an armory building. Um, and so once the city was made aware of this, um, we began discussions with the National Guard. Um, and were able to come to an agreement that the city would receive, uh, first right of refusal via an executed agreement. Um, so that meant that the guard may offer to sell us the property at its appraised value. Or the city to then, um, sell to a development partner. Um, so the city, uh, went through an entire RFP process, um, to find our development pro- partner for this project. Um, we did specifically ask for the city's housing priorities. So at this time, and probably for the next foreseeable future, uh, that includes homeownership opportunity, affordable housing units, both rental and homeownership. Um, and then specifically three plus bedroom units, um, so three, four, or five bedroom units to meet the needs of our community that is currently not being met by the private market. Um, so obviously, this was a very unique opportunity for the city, um, to play a part in what we asked. Would be developed on that parcel. Um, and it is a larger parcel than we normally see in Wunuski. You know, being how dense we are with our small parcel sizes. Um, so obviously, it is in a residential neighborhood, um, so there are still restrictions and limits on what we'll be able to be built there. But we did go through the RFP process and had one bidder, which was Champlain Housing Trust, um, who the city has worked with before on the Butternut Grove, um, development, and then also we're currently working with them on the redevelopment of the O'Brien Community Center. Um, so over the past few weeks, the city and the National Guard and CHT have been discussing and negotiating how we might go about this sale. The guard at first had been holding firm on a June 30th, um, sale date, uh, but has now indicated that they were able to make some adjustments to that, um, which has made this entire process a lot easier. So we are very grateful to hear word of that. I think it's now been two weeks. Um, since we first got word of that. So it makes this quite a lot more straightforward and I think more in alignment with what we had originally envisioned for this purchase and sale of the parcel, um, with the city really more acting as an intermediary. And so this first item, um, is the balance transfer request, which is for the deposit, um, which is refundable for the parcel. Um, so that is, this is connected to the first purchase and sale, which is from the guard to the city. And so this is 1% of the purchase price, and as I mentioned, it would be refundable to the city if the sale falls through. Let's see. Yeah, there are a few other, uh, relevant items, um, just legal aspects of this. Um, but I'm happy to answer any questions, uh, that there might be in relation to the balance fund, uh, transfer.
Well, Jasmine, just for continued level setting, uh, you mentioned that there are restrictions on what can be built in that area of town. Would you mind just informing the public what those are?
Uh huh, yeah. Revy can, uh, correctly if I'm wrong, but I think at this point, it's, uh, six units per building if it is an affordable development, um, using the planned unit development. Um, so obviously, it is a residential district, um, and any development, even if it is one that has partnered with the city, is required to follow the current, um, zoning regulations that exist for that parcel. Feel free to elaborate, Revy, if you'd like.
Revy, Revy is in the other room, but, um, and you may be coming just to build on that too, like at this point, like total number of units, just to kind of give us a sense of scope of s- of scale of what we're talking about.
Sure, yeah, so, yeah, so right now, I believe, um, CHT has proposed with current zoning regulations would be 24 units. Um, correct me if I'm wrong, Miranda. Um, I believe it was a few townhomes, so a few duplexes, um, for shared equity homeownership opportunity for people. So similar to, as I mentioned, Butternut Grove, um, and then a few kind of scattered, smaller, um, large three plus bedroom, uh, rental units, uh, that will be kind of around the rest of the parcel. Um, so the front, I think how it's designed right now, of course, that, uh, that could change. Um, is the townhomes on Le Fountain Street and then the rental units further back into the parcel. Um, kind of along the Park Street because the parcel is quite deep.
Yeah, is that a pretty good? Yeah, and and to be clear, like you said, Jasmine, that is not cast in stone at this point, but just to get a sense of what, what the sort of thinking is at the moment.
Please come on up for, um, I'll open it to public comment. I know, but we need it for the recording.
Clarification, are you saying 24 total units on that entire armory property? Total?
That's correct.
That's right now.
Yeah.
Present total.
That is what is currently proposed.
Thank you.
Did anyone else want to come up for questions?
24, right.
24, yeah.
Good. No one else, okay. Okay, council questions?
All right.
Okay, so on this first item, the action we are looking for is a motion to authorize up to $5,250 of general fund balance to the refundable deposit for the purchase and sale agreement with the state of Vermont National Guard for the Armory Parcel.
Second.
Motion by Thomas, second by Aurora. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Right.
So item B is our purchase and sale agreement.
So now that we have authorized potentially the use of that funding, Jasmine, can you say just a few detail words here about the purchase and sale agreement with between the city and the National Guard?
Yes, um, so as we've both now mentioned, this is the agreement between the city and the National Guard. The guard sent this over and we actually didn't even need to make very many edits. They gave us very favorable terms, which is great. So this is going to be a legal contract outlining the terms and conditions under which the state of Vermont will agree to sell the city of Wunuski, the Armory Parcel. So as mentioned, the closing date, uh, was moved back significantly. So the purchase and sale agreement now says that closing date shall be held on or before the 30th of September, which gives quite a bit more time for us to meet the environmental requirements that CHT needs. Um, so the current purchase price is 525,000. Uh, with that 1% deposit that, uh, I mentioned being held in escrow, um, the remaining balance will be due at closing. Um, and if the deal falls through, the deposit is refundable to the city. Um, so the purchaser's approval of a corrective action plan, the cap under Vermont Brownfield's law is required. Um, and if necessary, the purchaser may extend the closing by up to 90 days for that cap approval. So that, um, we were able to kind of put in a, an automatic contingency with a timeframe into the purchase and sale contract if the environmental efforts are taking longer than we hope or expect that they will. And the guard will continue maintaining the property in its current condition and not to enter any new leases. So they will continue stewarding that property as they have been, um, which is also great news for the city. And then it also states in the purchase and sale agreement that if both parties agree, the closing date can be moved back or up, um, as long as both, um, agree to that.
Any further questions from council on this one?
I know we have city lawyer here, so I just don't know if there are any comments that you'd like us to know. If not, away from.
There is a question.
Thank you.
And then I might be forgetting a previous question you had incorrectly, Thomas.
I asked about the guard.
Covering cleanup costs?
Covering cleanup costs.
Yep, so at this point, just to maybe take a small step back, and this is not my area of expertise. So I'm looking around at the partners in the room that that is, throw things at me or kick me if I'm off. But right now, what we are looking to do is a renewed phase one environmental study, um, with CHT that would then lead to, we're expecting a phase two. The initial phase one that was conducted by the guard is no longer timely, it's kind of elapsed. So that one did, however, recommend a phase two. So the phase one, um, study, a phase two study, and then the development, as Jasmine mentioned, of the corrective action plan with the state, um, that would need to be approved. So all of those pieces would be happening leading up to, um, a closing date with the guard. And then the anticipation is that there would then be pretty much immediately after, uh, sale to Champlain Housing Trust. So the city is not going to be engaged financially or physically in the removal of the remediation work that's going to be happening. What we need to help get across the finish line before we sell to CHT is an understanding and a plan of what the remediation is going to look like so that they can begin to figure out the funding, the budget, et cetera. But the city is not going to be responsible for that cost of remediation after the sale to CHT. I'm looking around. It's two nods, that's good, three, okay. Does that answer that question? Does that answer that question?
I guess it doesn't. It answers the question that we, as a city and taxpayers, are not going to be expected to cover cleanup costs. I guess it doesn't answer the question of whether or not the guard is covering cleanup costs.
Gotcha. So at this point, I think that's an unknown until we conduct the environmental testing to have a better understanding of what contaminants may or may not exist and where those may or may not have come from. So I don't think we can answer that question tonight.
Because it's different if it's contaminants from guard activities versus contaminants from other activities.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any questions from the public? Yeah, please come up to the microphone.
When are the neighbors who live in what they thought was a single family neighborhood going to be notified as to what's happening? That's one. There's so many people that don't know what's going on. Some people think their, their kids are going to get another field to run on, play in. And I'll go back to my first point. It's a single family neighborhood.
I understand your concerns. There have been a number of changes to local zoning over the years. We haven't had single family zoning in a long time. And the state has actually essentially made it illegal for areas, for dense areas like ours. We are state required to allow up to four unit buildings citywide. The state requires that of us. And we have chosen to implement an incentive that allows up to six units in a building if it is an affordable priority housing project. Those zoning changes have all gone through a public process. I understand that it's hard to follow that. We are trying hard to put information out through the city's updates, through Front Porch Forum and through social media. It is a lot to follow for an individual. We will have, Jasmine or Ray could update. We will have an opportunity before this project begins for members of the community to engage in the design process for what, what the look and feel is of what gets built there in the massing. Sally, do you want to come up? Yes, we need to use the microphone, sorry.
I just have a couple of questions. Sally Tipton, I happen to live on Dion Street, so I have some concerns. One of which, wondering if, and I'm sure that you've considered everything, but one of my concerns is the impact on the neighborhoods around that parcel of land. It's a concern. I always thought that that type of housing would be done in the gateway sections, not in neighborhoods. And I'm really concerned about it. The other thing I'm concerned about is the traffic. If you ever try to get off Dion Street onto East Allen Street at morning, evening, whatever, it's a concern. The other concern, and I think I mentioned it to you before, was the effect that this whole thing will have on the police department, on the fire department, in the school department. So those are basically some of my concerns, and I apologize, I've been out of the loop for a few years, so. But I'm very much concerned about the whole project.
Sally, I appreciate those concerns. Most of those items are things that have come up as the zoning changes have been made that would allow this project to be built. Additionally, through the development review process, we do look at traffic impacts, like impacts to water, wastewater, infrastructure, that sort of thing. This, what is being proposed is aligned with the current residential zoning. It's not anything above and beyond what's allowed. So we wouldn't anticipate there to be any detrimental impacts or above and beyond the capacity of the neighborhood.
Are these just statistics that you get from a source without actually looking to see what the traffic is like in that area?
We get traffic data from the Chitting County Regional Planning Commission whenever we do traffic studies.
And how often they do it as you ask them, or?
Yeah.
If I may, we just did one on the fountain, right? We did a study, so we're really dialed in with the traffic on the fountain.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I think context is also helpful, that this is a lot of housing for families who are already in Winuski. So it's supporting students to stay in the school and in the community that they already have.
That's very true. The reason the three bedroom affordable family housing has been set as a priority is because we have existing families in the community who are under housed in two bedroom units that they do not fit into. You're welcome to come back in.
Regional Planning Commission, now that 73 units have been approved with the ingress to Bellevue Street, which will take them down Bellevue's, I'm guessing, 1.5 acres. Time 73, and coming down Bellevue Street to Dion Street, and then add whatever, 24 more?
To my knowledge, projects in progress are on their radar. When we have done traffic studies in the past, there has never been a scenario where a street has been approaching overutilization. Go ahead.
So, first and fourth part, I'm not quite sure if I get different means. Champlain House pays taxes?
They do, yes.
Full rate?
I don't know that.
There in the room, you guys pay full rate taxes?
You, pardon me?
Little largest.
Yeah, yeah, do you pay full, like full rate, what, everybody else? Or is that 80%?
Somebody discount the rate, pays the deposit, and can't sell the loans at full rate. So we pay, we pay property taxes, trust me.
So it's each project, is each project?
For the public record, we get you off the microphone.
Thank you, Steve.
You watch it, sure. And Miranda's smarter than me, but Michael Monte, Champlain Housing Trust CEO, and yes, we pay taxes. And we pay, what I would say is that many of our rental properties have a formula that is used that is often sometimes more than the private sector is paying and sometimes less. It depends upon the assessor and how they're looking at it and when they're looking at it and when they're doing the reappraisal. So right now, I can say that we pay a substantial dollar amount to, for properties.
Can I share too, as a resident of the Butternut Grove, I pay property taxes because I'm in one of the shared equity programs and very much appreciate the opportunity that CHT brings to the city. Because I, someone who probably tell, very invested in civic engagement and the city would not otherwise be able to afford housing here. So this opportunity is, has been, the previous one has been extremely important for me and my neighbors. And like I said, with the shared equity, we are also taxpayers.
Can I just say, we feel it's important to pay property taxes in order to share the cost of those individuals never called and never went to schools and then called the police. That would be one thing, but that's not the case. So we're always, always willing to pay the property taxes to make sure city services are a good, good place. A third of our board members represent municipal government and are former municipal officials or current municipal officials. And so when they, when we're doing things, they're saying, how does this, how does this work for municipal government? So we pay attention to that.
So each, each project taxes are different based on what you?
Based upon, just like just any other, any other developer.
For sure, sure.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, all right.
Should I stay up here or do you want to mean it? Go away, I can go away.
So the other question, Ray, you, you had mentioned that Phase Two has not been done yet?
Correct.
And it's going to be done?
Yeah.
At the cost of the guards?
CHT. Who? CHT.
Then the only other thing I had was, like Paul said, my biggest concern is a notification to people in the area. You know, I'm not a social media guy, believe it or not, and I'm not on Facebook, none of that stuff. The majority of those folks in that entire area, I think, because I'm there, are elderly folks, you know, my mother's 92. A lot of those folks over there do not have social media. I was just wondering if the city could think about, you know, maybe three streets away or whatever, but notifying those people up there by mail or something different. A lot of those folks up there, what do you folks know? That, that are elderly, they've been there for years. Name happened. Paul, for example, is elderly.
Yeah. Yeah, sure.
This has been talked about in the Winuski newsletter in the past, correct?
Yeah, we put it in the newsletter, you can sign up for.
That though, every resident?
It does get delivered to every door.
We are, every single person has access to this information readily available, whether they access themselves or not, is.
Some of the information, right? So like overviews, make it in there, not the heavy detail.
Sure.
What I would say is that we do have a process and ordinance. If there is a conditional use, something out of the ordinary, where the abutting properties get notified, but projects that fall within regular approved zoning don't require special notification to neighbors.
I understand that.
I believe plan unit developments would trigger adjacent. They would. Notification, which is by mail. That's a good point.
And if it would be a plan unit? This would be considered a plan unit?
Yeah. So this will trigger a mail notification?
I mean, even if you folks are thinking of, maybe something even a little further. I know there's rules or regulations, but I'm just thinking that the people up there in that area should be more aware of that, you know? I could get, my mother don't read that Winuski thing, but she should, but, and I know a lot of folks else.
When we get to the public engagement and design, that also will include targeted outreach to get members of the, of the neighborhood to come engage.
Okay, okay.
And appreciate the reminders here, it's good reinforcement that we need to do that.
Yeah, especially, this, this is huge for a lot of people up there.
It's a change.
Very, yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Okay. I am seeking a motion to authorize the city manager to negotiate ministerial and non-substantive changes, and when complete, execute this purchase and sale agreement with the state of Vermont National Guard for the Armory Parcel as presented. So moved?
Second.
Motion by Aurora, second by Charlie, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And on to item C, the final item in this Armory topic area, the redevelopment project option agreement.
Last but not least, so Jasmine, again, do you mind doing a little overview here? And just, we do have partners from CHT in the room.
Yes, okay, so the option agreement here is the second half of this old property transfer transaction between the city and Champlain Housing Trust, who is the chosen bidder. This document, sort of similar to a purchase and sale, will provide CHT with the exclusive option to purchase the Armory Parcel from the city, as long as we acquire it before September 30th, unless there are environmental delays, as mentioned earlier. Since CHT is not able to participate in any sort of choice limiting activities, like a traditional purchase and sale, they generally use an option agreement before the official sale and closing. So this is what that is. So this agreement also will provide CHT with some site control so they can access and initiate all needed environmental testing, including that Phase One and then the Phase Two. CHT will provide the city with a $50,000 deposit, of which $40,000 is refundable. The rest of that, if everything fell through, would be utilized to cover our legal expenses generally. The deposit will be applied to the purchase price if the parcel is ultimately sold. And we do not need to keep the deposit in escrow and can keep any interest accumulated between now and the sale. So CHT may exercise this option during the option period, which would be, you know, the date signed until September 30th, with a possible one year extension for certain delays and only if certain conditions are met, including hot environmental review approval, acceptable title to the property, satisfactory appraisal, and an environmental assessment showing that the site is suitable and can be affordably remediated.
Jasmine?
And happy, happy to pass to CHT, too, if there's any questions or they'd like to chime in.
Are there questions from council on this options agreement? I have some questions. I just, I don't have a ton of experience in property transfer, so can you provide some additional insights as to why another appraisal would be needed? And follow up question. If that number is different than what they agreed upon, sale agreement with the guard is, how does that change our options agreement with CHT?
Yeah. Miranda, if you don't mind introducing yourself, just for the record, and I'm going to defer that, those questions to you initially, if that's all right.
Of course, yeah. Hi, I'm Miranda LaScars from the Champlain Housing Trust. I'm Director of Real Estate Development. Thank you for the opportunity to be here and answer questions of you. A second appraisal would be needed as the prospective purchaser. So an appraisal was commissioned by the guard. And at that time, they deemed the, you know, the appraised value of the parcel. That can change over time, particularly when conditions change, such as the Phase One and Phase Two results. So it's a requirement of our process using federal funds that we commission an appraisal as the prospective purchaser before our purchase.
So the follow up question, if that number is different than what the guard is asking for as part of our agreement with them, what happens?
Yeah, we have contemplated that scenario. It's unlikely that, we, we reviewed the guard's appraisal, we think it's a fair assessment of market value. And should there be environmental remediation required, the appraiser might take that into consideration, but from our experience, often recognizes that there are public funds to help CHT and other parties like us to address that remediation, so it doesn't affect the appraisal price. So our expectation is that the second appraisal will likely have the same result or a very close result. And our option agreement with the city does specify that we will pay the same amount that the city did, so the city is not at risk.
Okay, so it sounds like even if the number between the appraisals, what the guard is asking for in our sale agreement with them and our option agreement with you, CHT would still meet the five and a quarter that's needed, that's required to complete the, the sale and transfer of the property?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, yeah, great, thank you. I see legal counsel back.
Yeah, please join us.
Hi, Kathy Zoe from Paul Franklin Collins. I also just want to add, if the CHT appraisal comes in lower, the option agreement does, I think CHT's kind of willing to, the $50,000 deposit, they're willing to kind of like have that be the delta. So, you know, to the extent the property appraised is lower than the 525,000, you know, CHT's willing to let us keep the deposit up to that 50,000, if that makes sense. So like, the property could appraise at 475,000 and we would still be able to keep the 50,000.
Whereas if it were to appraise at 525, our $50,000 deposit would be credited towards that purchase price. So we'd pay an additional 475. So that was the mechanism by which we said, you know, should it come in lower, the city won't be at risk of losing funds over the holding of the property until we could purchase it.
Okay. Are there any scenarios where there could be worst case scenarios? Are there any worst case scenarios where it could be higher? And what happens in that case? It's just the guard said, they put up a number, we agreed to that number. So even if your appraisal comes out higher, that is still the number that we've agreed to with the guard?
Correct.
That's correct. So the purchase and sale agreement that, that you've considered is for a locked in price of 525.
Okay.
Should our appraisal come in higher than that 525, certainly the city could sell it to CHT for 525.
Good. Are there any other worst case scenarios that we have not discussed?
I mean, you know, I think a lot of this, there is some uncertainty built into this transaction just because of the nature of the parties that we're dealing with. So on the one hand, you know, the guard needs to sell this property. They, you know, they've done, there's, you know, the purchase and sale agreement that we've received from them is actually quite favorable in terms of contracts that, you know, one negotiates with the state. So there is, there is kind of a, you know, we're not able to lock in with the state, oh, for sure, you know, if we wanted to back out, we could just back out. Like, that's just not something that we could get from the state. On the other hand, with CHT, due to their restrictions with, you know, using federal funds, they're also not really able to kind of fully 100% commit today and say, yes, we will buy the property. So just by nature of the city being the middleman in the situation and the responsibility. So just by nature of the city being the middleman in the situation and the respective situations of the parties that we're dealing with, there is risk, but you know, we've tried to minimize that risk as much as possible through these agreements.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from council? Last chance for public comments.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I am seeking a motion to authorize the city manager, oh, yeah, yeah, sir. I am seeking a motion to authorize the city manager to negotiate ministerial and non substantive changes. And when complete, execute the option agreement with Champlain Housing Trust for the armory parcel as presented.
So moved?
Second.
Motion by Aurora, second by Charlie. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
There's one more item. Okay.
Was there something that you wanted to?
Yeah, we put in permission for a patio, how weird.
It didn't pass.
Oh, from the liquor control there. That was, that was hours ago.
For your reference, so those will always be right at the top of the six o'clock.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, I thought the meeting was. Well, thank you very much.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
There, I did have a question. In the permit, there was a thing about no awnings or coverings.
Can you assist him, Jenny?
So you did, I didn't see that you got.
Oh, we don't. It's, that place gets a lot of sunlight, so we might, down the road, be interested in one if possible. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Have a good one.
Okay. We are on to item 10. An executive session has been more pursuant to state statute section 313, which exempts from public inspection, A1A contracts. So similar to the last one, we warn this in case there is something that council wants to discuss about the ASME agreement confidentially, I would staff with attorney. If you don't feel the need, we can move to the action.
I'm fine.
Yeah.
Also good.
Great.
Great.
I would say the team did a great job two weeks ago.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
Yeah. No, I think these were just kind of like, if there were any last minute things, we wanted to hold that space for it, so.
Okay.
So Angela, I may default to you here to give a quick summary, again, just for public of some of the changes and then go from there.
Sure, not a problem. A lot of the negotiation this year with ASME was focused on retention. A lot of it was around resetting base pay and making it more competitive with other areas. And then time off and making sure that as people come on board, they have enough time to be able to be sick or, or take vacations as they need. And codifying things that happen already in their contract as they are. I have heard anecdotally, though not officially, that this was ratified last week by the union.
Great. Any questions or concerns?
Yeah, when I looked it over, I was like, both as someone who's worked in HR and is currently in a union, this looks good.
Okay, well, we have no members of the public, republic to solicit public comment from. Seeing no comment from council, I am seeking a motion to approve the FY 2628 AFSCME contract as presented, authorizing the city manager to sign contingent on ratification by the union.
So moved?
Second.
Motion by Aurora, second by Charlie. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And carries, thank you. We have reached the end of this evening's agenda. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Bren, second by Thomas. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.